Hear me? Okay. Leila, can you hear me? Okay, thank you. All right, today is Friday, July 28th, and I am calling this special session of the City Council to order at 10 o'clock. This is a Zoom meeting. Nancy, would you please do roll call for the record?
I'll be subbing in for Nancy today. She's on a well-deserved vacation day, so begin with Mayor Simmons.
Yes, here.
Counselor Merrily.
Yep.
Counselor Spengman.
Here.
Council President Kozlowski.
Here.
Thank you, Leila. The purpose of the meeting today is a continuation of the land use hearing in the appeal of 698 Dorcas Avenue, known as the Manzanita Loss Hotel. The council president has been presiding over these hearings because of my earlier recusal in this matter, and so I will turn this meeting over to her. Council President, are you ready?
I am ready, and before I open the discussion and the deliberation, I'd like to make a couple of comments. I think I, along with a lot of other people, have spent a lot of time looking at our ordinances, trying to determine what they mean, and trying to make the right decision. There's a significant number of the community that is really against this particular development, and I understand that. And if we were to have a community vote today, I would suspect that the probability is that the loss would not pass. However, it is not a public vote. It is the rule of law, and it is specifically the Rule of Ordinance 95-4. We need to make decisions today based on objective analysis, not on subjective wishes. And that's not always an easy thing to do. And I think if this process points out anything, it points out the incredibly important need for the update of the comprehensive plan. And I encourage all, everyone, to take the time to participate in that process. I think we've learned a lot through this. Lastly, I am in awe of the Planning Commission and the amount of time and energy and focus that they spent on this process. I am equally in awe of the community and the sincere effort to provide both the commission and the council today with information deemed important to the rule of law. So I think the process has been a fair one, and I sincerely, as I know all of the council does, appreciate the commitment of both the Planning Commission and the community. So I am now going to open the hearing. My name is Lynda Kozlowski, and I am the city council president, and I will be presiding over the discussion and deliberation today. This is the time and place set for a continuation of the land use hearing, held on July 26, 2023. This portion of the hearing will include the discussion and deliberations of the council in the matter of an appeal of the Planning Commission's decision to deny a planned unit development application to create a 34-unit hotel at 698 Dorcas Lane in the S R zone. At a special set hearing on July 12, 2023, the City Council determined that the scope of the review per Manzanita zoning ordinance section 10.180 would be restricted to the record made on the decision being appealed. On July 26, 2023, the council held the public comment portion of this hearing. The specific criteria for approval was summarized in the staff report, which was also reviewed at the meeting. The public comment portion of this hearing has closed, and no further information shall be received except for specific questions of staff. Because the council's review is on the record, no new evidence has been accepted, and that the City Council's decision will be made based on the evidentiary record and arguments made before the council at its July 26 meeting. As discussed in the July 26 meeting 2023 hearing, we have two council members who were previously recused for these proceedings. Mayor Simmons and Counselor Merrily have declared the source of their actual and potential bias for the record and have also disclosed the nature and substance of any ex parte contacts. Under the rule of necessity, they will participate in today's vote, but not the council's discussion or deliberation. Are there any further declaration of conflict or bias, ex parte contact, or site visits by any member of this body since the July 26 meeting? I have made no contact and have not viewed the property since the July 26 meeting.
I'm in the same position.
Okay. Brad?
No conflicts.
Jerry?
Same.
Okay. Discussion by council. As noted in the staff report dated July 19, 2023, the council must determine whether, based on the evidence in the record before the Planning Commission, the proposed use meets the criteria in MZO 3.0304A and MZO 4.1363C5. I would now invite the council members who are permitted to do so to discuss, including presenting any further questions to staff. So the discussion is as follows. The checklist of discussions or decisions before the council. With respect to MZO 3.0304A, the council must decide: One, the council need not determine whether the dwelling units apply to the hotels' units if the council determines that, based on the evidence in the record, the proposed use can meet the density standard by dedicating 40% of the total lot or parcel area for use as a public or private park. If the council determines that the density standard is met, the council may approve the use with a condition of approval requiring the applicant to designate 40% of the total lot or parcel as a park. Alternatively, the council may make an interpretation on the record about whether dwelling units, as used in the code, includes the proposed hotel units. If no, then the criteria presents no bias or no basis for denial, and the council should find that the application meets this criteria. If yes, then the council will need to consider further the density standard and whether it can be met. If the council determines that the hotel units are dwelling units, it would need to determine whether the proposed use can meet the density standard. If yes, the evidence in the record shows that the proposed use can meet the density standard by dedicating at least 40% of the total area as a public or private park, then the council should find that the application meets the criterion. If no, the evidence in the record shows that the proposed use cannot meet the density standard by dedicating at least 40% of the total area as a public or private park, then the council should find that the application does not meet this criterion. B. With respect to MZO 4.1363C5, the City Council must determine whether, based on the evidence in the record, are the streets adequate to support the anticipated traffic, and the development will not overload the areas or the streets outside the planned area. If the evidence shows that the streets are adequate to support the anticipated traffic, and the development will not overload the streets outside the planned area, it should determine that this criteria is met. If the evidence shows that the streets are inadequate to support the anticipated traffic, or that the development will overload the streets outside the planned area, it should determine that this criteria is not met. D. Determination on application. The options before the council are as follows. Uphold the Planning Commission's decision to deny the application. Uphold the planning's decision with modified findings. Reverse the Planning Commission's decision and establish finding as to why the application complies with the remand criteria. If the council does this action, it will need to determine what conditions of approval should attach to the application. Staff will prepare the appropriate documentation for the presiding officer's signature. So before we go to the next step, I have a procedure, actually, two procedural questions for our legal counsel. The rule of necessity. Would you please go over in detail for us one more time what the rule of necessity is and how it applies specifically to the city of Manzanita, based, I believe, on our charter? And then, secondly, given the rule of necessity, if, as an example, Jerry and I agree, and I go to the recused council member, and they agree, do we need to go any further? So, Savani, those are my two questions. Can you help us with that?
Yes, absolutely. Okay, so the rule of necessity and why it is coming up in this particular land use proceeding is because of a few different pieces of the law, of Oregon law, of land use procedure, and of the city council's charter coming together all at once. So as you know, there is a four-member council currently, and as we also know, two of those members were previously recused in this land use matter. We also know that there's the 120-day time clock, which is the time in which the city has to make a final decision in writing after a remand has been requested. So after it comes back to the city on remand from Luba, there's 120 days in which the city has to make a final determination on the record. We are within the time period to do that, so that is not currently an issue, but how it could become an issue is this interesting interaction between that and the city's charter. So for many cities, a quorum or a majority of the members of the governing body, the city council, is required to act. So for most cities, you have a four-member council, or up to five members, you would only need three members to vote to take some action. In Manzanita, there's this interesting provision in the charter that says that a concurrence of the majority of members of the city council shall be necessary to decide any question before the council. And so not only do you need three members to be able to convene and conduct business as the city council, you need three members of the council to agree to take any action. Because that's what the concurrence piece is. The concurrence means that there have to be a majority of the members of the council, that's three, in agreement to take a final action. Here, because there were two members who were previously recused, technically, without their vote, the city would not be able to take any action. So if you only had two members voting, the city would not be able to take any action on this matter. Because the city is required to do so within 120 days, the rule of necessity kicks in. And that's not in the land use process. The rule of necessity comes from the government ethics portion of Oregon law, and it allows for people who are decision-makers who have previously recused themselves to participate in the vote only if their vote would be necessary to meet a requirement of minimum number of votes to take official action. So at this point, we know we need three. We know we have to have three within 120 days, so there's not an option to add a new council member. So we would need at least three members of this body to be able to vote to move forward, and so the rule of necessity kicks in. The rule of necessity, like we talked about last time, does not allow the recused members to participate in the discussion or the deliberations. It only allows for their participation in the vote. And it... So the process here, getting to your second question, would be if the two deliberating members agree on the decision, and we go to a vote of one of the recused members, and they also agree with that decision, then the vote can end there, because that would be three. That's enough for the council to take final action.
Great. All right, thank you. Jerry, do you have any procedural questions at all?
I just want to reiterate what I think Savani told us on Wednesday, and that is that if a initial vote or first vote results in a 2-2 tie, that in effect is a nullity, it's a non-action, which means we can then attempt a second vote.
And we would do that by calling it what?
Well, I think a second vote would be the first vote, because the first vote will have not been an action.
Okay, okay.
I'm sorry to interrupt you, Savani, but I think that was your...
No, I think that's right.
Okay.
I just want to make sure everything's clear so that we're all on the same page, and I appreciate that, Savani. That was very helpful. All right, so I'm going to open for discussion, open the meeting for discussion by the city council. So Jerry, you're on.
Okay, so before I start, I just want to... First of all, I want to agree with many of your comments, Lynda, to open the hearing. I appreciated those. I think it's really important for us to follow the matrix that you laid out. And so that'll keep the discussion very organized. I will say that there are two primary issues in this matter. I find one of them much easier to resolve than the other. So if the matrix was not governing us, I would perhaps like to dispose of the first easier issue first. However, I think the matrix is there for a good reason. We should follow it carefully. I do have some questions for staff with respect to the more challenging issue, which is the density standard issue. So I guess, why don't we just repeat step by step, not the whole matrix, but repeat that very first step, and I'll tell you what I think.
Okay, I think that's a great way to go. A. With respect to MZO 3.0304A, the council must decide: One, the council need not determine whether dwelling units applies to the hotels' units if the council determines that, based on the evidence in the record, the proposed use can meet the density standard by dedicating 40% of the total lot or parcel area for use as a public or private park. As part of one, if the council determines that the density standard is met, the council may approve the use with a condition of approval requiring the applicant to designate 40% of the total lot or parcel area as a park.
Okay. My review of the record indicates that there has not been a satisfactory showing by the applicant that they can meet the 40% criteria. I think the drawing that was submitted was appropriately discussed and analyzed by the Planning Commission, and I think they made a finding that I can support that that drawing did not clearly establish compliance with the criteria.
Okay. I have a question for staff. Is there a reference in our ordinance 95-4 that defines the dwelling units or identifies the dwelling units as living space, not as transient lodging?
I'm going to pull up the reference, and if you'll just give me a moment, we'll get that up here.
Well, I'm clear about the reference of what a dwelling unit requires. I'm wondering if in the ordinances anywhere else, it talks about dwelling units as living space, full-time living space, or transit space. And the reason that I'm asking that has to do with Commissioner Hiltonbrand's building code question during the Planning Commission.
I don't believe so. I'll ask Scott if he has any additional comments to that.
No, there's nowhere that references that specifically, Lynda, in that work.
Okay, thank you. In that case, I agree with Councilperson Spengman's response to 1A. So I'm going to go to Brad.
I'll agree.
Okay. So we have three agreements on one. Now, two. Alternatively, the council may make an interpretation on the record about whether dwelling units, as used in the code, includes the proposed hotel units. If no, then this criterion presents no bias for denial, and the council should find that the application meets this criteria. If yes, then the council will need to consider whether the density standard can be met. Jerry?
So I think the Planning Commission made an appropriate finding with respect to the definition of dwelling units in terms of the presence in the units of at least four of certain criteria. In this case, I think we're talking about a toilet, a shower, cooking facilities, and refrigeration. The applicant argues primarily that those criteria need not be reached, because by their very nature, the hotel units are not dwelling units. They're essentially for human habitation, but only of a temporary transient nature. We don't define that specifically in the zoning code or elsewhere, apparently, but we do use dwelling units prominently in the ordinance that discusses short-term rentals in Manzanita, which are by far the predominant transient lodging facilities in our town. And I think it would be incoherent to call short-term rentals dwelling units in the very ordinance that regulates them in detail, and then say that hotels cannot be considered dwelling units. Orca clearly, not Orca, sorry, Luba clearly allowed for the possibility that this project couldn't be both a hotel and a collection of dwelling units, or else we wouldn't have been remanded on that issue to establish a better record. So I do think that best reading of our code and other references to dwelling units in our ordinances is that this project does meet the definition of dwelling units.
Okay. I had a much more difficult process to decide that. I thought the applicant made a good point in terms of listing all of the things that were available and assuming to some extent that hotels might be included in that point. However, your short-term rental point, Jerry, was a really good one, and I do concur with that, so I'm going to vote no. Brad?
I'm confused a little bit, so as far as what is it, a yes vote and no vote? I thought that the yes vote meant that it was a dwelling unit, and a no vote is that it is.
I think you're right. I'm sorry, I misstated that. I think that it is not, that as defined, it is not a dwelling unit.
I'm sorry. I think we may be in disagreement, Lynda. I consider the Planning Commission's conclusion that they are dwelling units to be accurate.
Okay, and I disagree with that, so we are in opposition. So Brad?
I find them to be dwelling units.
Mayor?
I agree with the Planning Commission, yes.
So in that case, it is a three-to-one vote? So we go, let me see, we go on to three. If the council determines that the hotel units are dwelling units, it would not need to determine whether the proposed use met the density requirements, so we have decided. Now I'm confused. Okay, if the council determines that the hotel units are dwelling units, it would need to determine whether the proposed use can meet the density standard. We just said that the hotel units are dwelling units, so now we need to decide if they meet the density standard. Is that correct? I hear no...
That's correct.
Yeah. Okay, so if yes, in other words, if the hotel units are dwelling units, the evidence in the record shows that the proposed use can meet the density standard by dedicating at least 40% of the total area as a public or private park, then the council should find that the application meets the criterion. If no, the evidence in the record shows that the proposed use cannot meet the density standard by dedicating at least 40% of the total area as a public or private park, then the council should find the application does not meet this criteria. Jerry?
All right, then it's my turn to be confused. I thought that in 1A we answered the question about whether or not the applicant had established in the record whether or not it could meet the 40% standard. And I think we both agreed, and Brad concurred, that the record does not establish that they could meet the 40% standard. And we did that, I think, because the applicant had offered to meet the 40% standard, even though the applicant disagrees with the dwelling unit finding. Once we then moved on to the dwelling unit finding, that requires, of course, under our code, that the 40% rule be met. We've already established that it was not met by the record that we're reviewing. I guess what I need to understand from staff, including Savani, is does that end that issue, or is there a discussion to be had about whether the condition could be met as a condition of approval?
So I do think that that's the question of 1A and 3. Is it possible, based on the information in the record, for the applicant to meet this condition with a condition of approval or without one? But staff suggestion is strongly that if it was met, that it would be But staff suggestion is strongly that if it was met, that it would be a condition of approval. Um, so it's not, is there, is there, it's not necessarily, is there a specific proposal that was provided to the planning commission sufficient to meet that standard? It's, is it possible, based on the evidence in the record, for the application to meet that standard?
Okay, so I think what, uh, is confounding, uh, at least to me, in this on this issue is seems like there's two questions. One is, did the applicant establish in the record that it has met the forty percent requirement? And I would say no. The second question is, uh, is it possible to meet the forty percent criteria? Based on the record, uh, I, it appears to be possible, uh, although I think there's a lot of work to be done. And so I, I guess I understood that there was at least an opportunity to consider meeting that possibility through a condition of approval. I may have been wrong. Uh, I would, it's not gonna change my position. But I thought that essentially, uh, uh, we were talking extensively, uh, I thought on Wednesday about the record that was presented and the, uh, potential or possibility, uh, that still existed regardless of what that record indicated or, uh, compliance with the forty percent rule, um, through a separate or different process.
So I think I, I'm, and I know I used this example last time, but I think the, it's a useful one. That if there was so much of the property that was taken up by building space or by other aspects of the project that could not be a park, then that would be a finding that it could not meet the density standard.
Right.
Here you have a specific, um, specific proposal by the applicant, which the planning commission found was not a park. And the council is not bound by that determination, but to the extent that it agreed with the planning commission, that some portion of it were not a park. If there's information in the record that the, that you can, you know, from your own judgment, see that there is a portion of the property that could add up to forty percent. Um, it would have to be established as a condition of approval. So there's, there's two, does it meet this criterion as it is? That would be, um, the app, in that example, maybe the applicant, or in a different example, the applicant has proposed, um, here's, you know, here's the buildings that are gonna be on the property. Here's the park that's gonna be on a prop, on the property. It's just part of the plan. We don't need a condition of approval because it's already built into the plan. That's not the situation we have here. Um, the situation we have here is, is there enough space in the council's estimation to meet that forty percent standard? And then if so, can it put a condition of approval on the property um, that would require that to be done in a way that's satisfactory to the council?
Okay, uh, I understand. I think the reason we're having a problem is because, uh, giving the, uh, applicant the full benefit of uh, his assertions, uh, not in the record, but, uh, in his letter of appeal, um, there could be forty percent of the property available for open space. It's extremely close. And open space, uh, is not what we're going for here. We're going for a park or a golf course. And obviously it's not a golf course in this case. So we're going for a park. And a park is not, uh, identical to the term open space. Uh, so if there's very close perhaps to forty percent available for open space that could arguably be, uh, defined as a park, that just doesn't give us a lot of wiggle room, uh, when we don't have an evidentiary record, uh, on that specific issue to, to, uh, to deal with. And so uh, I guess I was I'll stick with my, I say absolutely, we'll stick with my conclusion that the, the planning commission made the correct finding that, um, on the record, uh, there was not an establishment that that criteria was met by the applicant, um. But it would, uh, I, I guess I'm still curious and I still want to, uh, talk to staff about how staff would, uh, potentially satisfy uh, condition F.
So can I, can I just, because I'm going in the same direction, could I just ask staff as well? If, if the, uh, square footage that is on the map, you consider to be correct? And that is, um, one hundred sixty-six thousand eight hundred and thirty-four square feet, of which seventy-three thousand eight hundred and sixty-four point twenty-four square, square feet are set aside for structures or infrastructure, which would leave about forty-four point two seven percent as open space or park. Um, do you agree with, I mean, are those numbers in your estimation correct?
Can I ask Scott to jump in here?
I'm jumping in. Linda, uh, which exhibit are you looking at?
I think it was the last map that we looked at. Maybe you can pull it up.
Are, are you talking about exhibit C?
Say that again?
Exhibit C? Here, let me because I'm, I, the numbers didn't match what exhibit C shows.
Pull up exhibit C. I just wanna make sure the numbers are correct.
So exhibit C, it, which was included in his appeal, shows a lot covers of twenty-seven point nine percent, and that would be structures. Um, dedicated open space, sixty-six thousand three hundred and eighty-five square feet. So these numbers here, he's got forty-six thousand two hundred and thirty-five square feet of lot coverage, and that would be your structures. Leaving, you know, that's only twenty, about twenty-eight percent. So you still have seventy-two percent open space that could be dedicated to a park area. You know, the, the lines could be adjusted as needed, I guess. There's, I don't think this is a correct map.
Why, can we get the correct map?
I'm, I'm looking for it. Hold on here.
Thanks, Scott.
Too many things on my screen here. There is exhibit C. So exhibit C shows, yeah, that was the correct one I had. So this, exhibit C, the forty-seven point six percent includes down here encompassing the trail. The lot coverage on structures is still twenty-eight percent or twenty-seven point nine percent. Uh, leaving roughly seventy-two percent open space. They could, you know, they could be adjusted however needed to come up with the forty percent.
Okay. And then a second question is, um, and, and you, please tell me if this is in the record. Um, there was a discussion by the applicant of putting a, placing the trail along Classic Street.
Uh, would that be on the property line, which would be the?
On the property line, right.
Which would be on this dark line here?
Yeah.
Yeah, there was a discussion. I think the discussion was that it would be on his property and, and move the trail up, uh, along Classic on his property. And, and you could, I think he, you could, he could answer that. He's on the call.
Yeah, Ms. Vito, yeah, Linda, that is correct, what you had mentioned or with respect to that east property line. So.
Okay. Does that, does that change the numbers in any way? Or is that?
It, it does not. It would keep the numbers the same for this site map that is shown here.
But we wouldn't be talking about the, the, um, the increase in, you know, the difficulty of coming, going from, from the, the general open space to the, uh, connection with, uh, hopefully the trails from the Highland.
Correct. It would keep it at a higher elevation throughout the entire path. Correct.
Okay, thank you. So I guess the question then back, going back to revisit the initial question, uh, is, does the applicant have adequate space to, uh, to have forty percent open space slash park to what Savani just mentioned, consistent with her comments?
Well, I, I don't, I don't see how we can make, uh, that finding. What we were told, uh, what the planning commission was told, uh, and what the planning commission deliberated carefully over was a proposal, uh, that was in the, I think, forty-seven point six percent range. And the planning commission, I think, uh, very reasonably excluded a meaningful chunk of that forty-seven point six percent. I don't know what meaningful chunk. I, I don't know what the exact percentage remaining is right now. If you, if I, if I accept, and I do, the planning commission's determination that the northernmost part of the proposed, uh, park is not a park, is not park-like, cannot be considered part of the park. If, if I accept that, uh, and I do, uh, then that brings me down from forty-seven point six percent, uh, awful close to forty percent if I accept every other inch of, of the, uh, open spaces park. And we didn't have a developed record to, for me to accept that. So again, I, I, um, I was curious to hear, I guess it, it still may be relevant. I'd like to hear from staff uh, how they would go about assessing the applicant's compliance with condition F, if there was a approval of the, of the application with the, uh, fifteen conditions, uh, attached, uh. Because applicant, uh, recommend, uh, excuse me, condition F calls for, uh, certainly a quantitative, uh, analysis of the amount of open space that is, uh, available for a park. But it would also, I think, require staff to, uh, make a qualitative decision about how much of that open space is in fact can be, uh, considered park. Uh, you know, the, the challenge here is not the ambiguity or lack of clarity in our code uh, is one issue, uh. But honestly, the shape and size and topography of the proposed park is, is what really makes this complicated. I mean, if we were looking at, um, a nice wide open chunk of land, and we are looking at a wide open chunk of land, just how much of the forty-seven point six percent in the, offered in the record is that? I don't know. Certainly not, uh, certainly not over forty. So I, i- if staff could just help me out, if we were to approve the application subject to the conditions, including condition F, what would staff be looking for in order for the applicant to satisfy condition F, um, consistent with its failure to satisfy the planning commission at its, uh, June sixteenth hearing?
I think that's the question. I agree.
So there's a couple of ways I'll attack that question. So the first and perhaps most important thing that staff would need is clear and concise direction from council in this matter on what constitutes a park. Um, so that would be a necessary part of your discussion today, should you determine that the applicant has the ability to meet the forty percent standard. Um, so, so that would be very important. Um, with that, we would amend the condition of approval to reflect that direction. Staff would then begin working with the applicant. Um, off the top of my head, one of the first things I'd want is a survey, a delineation and a description of what the park is that meets the conditions for which council has defined. Um, because we didn't get that, um, from the planning commission's decision. And so in this case, it would be incumbent on the council to provide us direction with that. Ultimately, staff would go back and forth with the applicant until that standard was met in the opinion of staff based on the direction from council. And then through the ordinance hearing process, because this open space has to be dedicated um, and demarcated on our comprehensive plan, which requires a map amendment, that the ultimate decision then falls to the city council to then determine, did they in fact meet that standard? The answer is no. Then city council gives both the applicant and staff direction to revise. And then we do that until the council is satisfied with the design of the open space. So staff would kind of have the initial go with this. Uh, the more direction we have from council on what you believe constitutes a park, given that we don't have a defined definition in our zoning ordinance, will provide us a lot more resources to work with the applicant um, to define that open space. But ultimately, this would go to the city council, uh, for final approval.
Okay. And, and I assume that, um, in order for council to give you better guidance on what it considers a park, you'd have to rely on, uh, the deliberations of two counselors, um, that may or may not be, uh, adhered, uh, agreed with by one of the other two counselors. Um, and we'd be doing it on the fly, uh, this morning, uh, which does not give me confidence that we would, uh, be able to do something that would, uh, satisfy all parties to this, uh, proceeding. And so we, we might end up in Luba over shorthanded council's definition of a park. Um, you know, the, the, our ordinance that sets up our planning commission, uh, specifically tells the planning commission that it shall make recommendations to the city council on several matters, including parks. And I did hear what I thought was a pretty robust discussion of the meaning of a park, uh, by five members of the planning commission who all are very familiar with this piece of property, who all are very familiar with the community that we all live in. And, um, I guess based on, on their, uh, thoughtful deliberation, um, I'm, I'm comfortable saying that, uh, absolutely not all of the drawing that was submitted, uh, at the June sixteenth hearing uh, would meet the definition of a park. Then it causes me to wonder, well, how much of that picture would be? Then it causes me to wonder, well, how much of that picture would meet the definition of a park? I certainly can't answer that in a hearing on the record. But I can, but I can safely say that the applicant did not on the record establish to certainly the planning commission satisfaction nor mine that they met the forty percent requirement. The question seems to be, well, is there potential for them to meet it? Is there the capacity for them to meet it? Sure, there is. I mean, obviously buildings can be moved around to create more space if that was necessary. I don't know if that's necessary. There's just too much unknown, which is unfortunate, given that that June sixteenth hearing was, I think, by my count, the fifth planning commission hearing in this matter. I'm not sure how many of those touched directly on this issue, but this has been a well litigated issue to this point. And we still don't have a clear and defensible demonstration by the applicant that they can meet the forty percent standard. If they have the potential to meet it through the conditions of approval process. You know, I well, I think we, I think we've already voted by a majority of council that the density standard applies because we consider the hotels include dwelling units. And we've also voted by a majority of council that the applicant failed to establish that it can meet the forty percent rule, or that it did meet the forty percent rule on the record in this case. So I'm not sure there's a whole lot more to talk about on this.
I'd like to ask Savani's input on that, please.
Sure. Is there a specific question? Because I do have a couple of thoughts, but if there's a specific question, I'd like to answer.
I want to hear your thoughts.
Yeah, okay. So first of all, I do think the question is whether the forty percent standard can be met with conditions, not whether the specific information provided meets that standard. And that's a function of the land use process and the way that Luba operates that there is some flexibility there for if a condition can be met, then it's appropriate for the council to make that determination and then include as a condition of approval, the specific requirement. On that piece, if you got to that piece as a council, you could do a couple of things. You could adopt by reference the planning commission's discussion of a park and use that as guidance to staff to go through that process that Leila outlined to meet condition F. So you could adopt that by reference. The other potential possibility is, you know, the hundred and twenty day time clock is available to extend by the applicant. I don't know if they would be inclined to do that. But the, if the council felt that the planning commission was more appropriately situated to be the deciding body on what the, what a park should look like, that that's the body they could work with, could propose that to the applicant as, you know, we're going to approve with conditions, but the conditions are going to be may, maybe we'll send the conditions back to the planning commission with direction that this is approved, but we would like you to work with the planning commission on conditions. Again, that would be, I don't know, I don't have any information that the applicant would agree to that or would be motivated to agree to that. And it is entirely their prerogative to do so. And I think, you know, staff is also in a position to be that body that works with the applicant to determine what, whether or not the park is met. And then as Leila outlined, there would be another public process to finalize the parameters of that, that would be ultimately before the council as well. And so there's a lot of process potentially here. And I might suggest just adopting the planning commission's discussion around what is a park and what isn't a park as direction for staff if you were inclined to approve that. And I, again, I do think that the question is not does the specific proposal meet this? The density standard, if the council agrees with planning commission, that there's some piece of it that doesn't meet that. Are there other pieces of the property based on the square footage or other drawings that you can see in the record where you can see just as a matter of reviewing the documents, well, there's some other space that could be used. And a condition of approval has to be met. So the use can't, can't be final, will not actually become a hotel until each of these conditions is met. And so if, you know, if you, the council require, approve this use with a condition that this park meets certain criteria or, you know, that it work with staff to come up with a proposal that is acceptable to the city on the park. If that doesn't happen, then there's no hotel.
Right.
Okay, so a couple of questions on that. So in the planning commission, Commissioner Chris indicated that the state, that the, the state uses, I think you called ordinary meeting, and that they use Webster's Third New Edition Dictionary, ten point oh oh two edition revised. And that, that definition is a park is a tract of land maintained by a city or town as a piece of beauty and a public reputation. So that, that's, at least in my re-listening to that, that's what I do from that. Second question is, if Savani, if we determine that there is enough space or potential space and the, and these are Lava F's, and the applicant agrees that we could send it back to the planning commission for this definition of a park, can we also ask the planning commission to review the findings? I think one of the issues that both Jerry and I are pretty uncomfortable with is going over the findings. I assume if it's a yes, going over the findings as non-technical planning people. So that, I guess my question is, if the applicant says yes, if we can send, if we agree that there's potential forty percent, if the applicant says yes, we can send it back to the planning commission for definition, for clearer definition of a park and review of the findings.
The conditions, the additional conditions of approval?
Yeah. But does that reside still in the city council?
I, I mean, I think there's a, there's the same timing issue. There's the same, you know, applicant's prerogative to agree to that particular plan. And then I think if you were going to do that, it would have to be pretty clear, the direction to the planning commission. If you, if you got all the way through that, it would be have to be clear that the direction to the planning commission is just to determine whether or not these are appropriate. And, you know, that, because the only way we would go there is if the use was approved. So it would have to be very clear, if the use is approved, we're just asking that you take a first look at the conditions of approval. And that those still need to be, of course, reasonable and within the code, but just recognizing that the planning commission might be a better body than the two council members who are deliberating, because it seems like that's the concern to, to make those findings.
And all of that would have to be approved by the applicant.
Well, there, yeah, because there's a timing, there's a timing issue.
Okay.
Well, I, I appreciate the clarification. And I understand Savani, you're saying essentially that the decision at this point in the matrix is whether or not the potential exists for the applicant to meet the forty percent requirement in the density standard as a condition of approval. And I heard from Leila, the process that would be involved, there is a certain amount of protection of the public's interests, obviously, in that process. So that's good. I do think that your suggestion of referencing the planning commission's discussion of what constitutes a park is a good one. I, it, it it may be rambling or, or subjective at times, but it was a deliberative process or a iterative process. It referred to, I think, defensible legal principles. And so, you know, if, if the, if, and I, you know, I know there's an issue that's been expressed about a lack of trust between some members of the community and the applicant. On this issue, the question is, do we trust our staff? I do. I think the staff is hearing loud and clear, both from the community and the planning commission and would be diligent in, in making sure if this was a condition of approval, that the planning commission's assessment of what is and what is not a park would be central to the decision-making on condition F. So as I understand it, we have ruled that the density standard does apply in this case, because a majority of council agrees that this hotel includes dwelling units. We have agreed that on the record established thus far, there's not been a showing that the forty percent requirement has been met. And now we are discussing whether or not a showing could potentially be met as a condition of approval, assuming that the rationale of the planning commission is incorporated into the analysis on condition F. Does that all sound right?
Say the last part again, please, Jerry.
I, I'm adopting Savani's suggestion that as part of implementation of condition F, staff would be guided by, or incorporate the deliberation of the planning commission on June sixteenth with regard to the definition of what is park. Open land is an easier call. What is park is tougher. And I think they did a good job. And I note that the handbook that planning commissions around Oregon use to guide their work says that as the dedicated planning body for a jurisdiction, the elected officials depend on the planning commission to fully consider matters and forward thoroughly evaluated reasoned recommendations. I think they did, in this case, fully consider this matter. And their recommendation was that the drawing presented on June sixteenth didn't cut it, and we're agreeing with that. But in addition to that finite finding, they also, I think, established the parameters that a council would use if we were gonna come up with a definition for park. I don't think we need to or should try to come up with it today. I think that would be not the best way to make policy. But I do think that moving forward, we should have a definition of a hotel in our code. We should have a definition of a park in our, in our code. And I think, like many other issues, I think we're gonna do some cleaning up in the, in the comp plan rewrite. So anyway, I know I'm being long-winded, but I want to make sure we get this right. And, and, and we obviously would first have agreed to approve the application with conditions. We haven't done that yet. But, but if we were to, my understanding would be that condition F would be the province of staff guided by the planning commission and with the due process, or I should say the public hearing protections built into the process that Leila's referenced.
And that would not require an extension of the time. We would assume that based on the information we have right now, that we could, if we chose to approve it.
Well, that would, I, I think you're right, that that would not require an extension of time. But it certainly invites the consideration of that.
So, so is it, is it appropriate, and this is a Savani question, is it appropriate at this point to ask the applicant if, if we move forward and make the decision that there is space, that we're not defining that space at this point, and that we are going to rely heavily on the planning commission's definition? Would it, would they be willing to extend the timeframe?
Yes, I mean, I think if you are, if this is something you're considering, I don't think that the, the decision, I guess I would caution the council that the decision about whether or not it can meet, whether it can meet that should not be based on whether or not the planning commission would be the body to decide that. Or decide what, what the park would look like, or what the, what the conditions of approval would be. But it is appropriate to discuss with the, it's not evidence to discuss with the applicant whether or not they would agree to a particular condition of approval. It's not, it's not seeking evidence from the applicant if you wanted to have the discussion with them about whether or not they would accept a particular condition of approval. Or extend the timeframe.
Okay, so if we, if we ask the applicant to extend the timeframe, what we, the purpose of that, we would have had to say that we believe that there is forty percent available on the site. In order to meet the findings, we need to better understand what the definition of a park is?
Uh, yes.
Okay. So the first step would be do, based on what you just said, and based on the numbers that we have, is there room enough on the space of the lot? I'm not quite sure how you describe that, of the parcel that would allow forty, forty percent to be used as a park yet to be defined? Is that the next step?
I believe so.
I didn't get that.
So the next, so before we can do anything in terms of asking for extension or any other issues that we just brought up, we have to decide if based on the square foot measurements of the parcel of land, that there is adequate space to put a park. Is there forty percent, is there forty percent space available? And I'll go back to Savani's example. And that is if the hotel units took up seventy five percent of the space, then to have forty percent available for a park is impossible. If the, if the units take up less than or sixty percent, less than sixty percent, then according to land use, there is room. And Savani, correctly, there is room to build a park. Is that correct, Savani?
That's correct. Yes, to meet the density standard.
The density standard. And I'd like to go back and maybe Scott, to Scott, to tell us what the proposal indicates in terms of complete square footage, square footage. what the proposal indicates in terms of complete square footage, square footage used in infrastructure, and then what is remaining.
Let me, I'm gonna share my screen again, just so I can show it to you. Wrong, hold on. There, can you see my screen now?
Yeah, but you, you're not emails.
Nothing else? Okay, hold on just a second. Now I've lost you. Let me try that again. It's a problem with having two screens. How about now? Can you see that now?
Now we can see it.
Okay, so if you look at up here on lot coverage, the forty six thousand two hundred and thirty five square feet, which is twenty seven point nine percent of the lot, is what the structures would cover, leaving seventy point two or seventy two point two square, one square feet of remaining lot that could be utilized or configured in a way to meet the criteria of a park, the open space. So this number right here is what the structures would cover. And with his proposal, it doesn't cover everything for the forty seven point six percent. The only portion that covers is the shaded area that continues down here.
And does that include the roads and the parking?
No, the only, the only part that is included in this forty seven point six percent would be this shaded area, if you can see my my cursor. That. The lighter area is not covered in that, but just the shaded area that continues along Classic. That's the only portion. So it does not include the white area around the micro cabins here or the white around any of these other structures. And it does not include the footprint, which is the black portion on the prints. So the black portion on the print is twenty seven point nine percent.
Okay, and then, okay, okay, that's, I guess that's the question that we have in front of us right now.
Okay.
Thank you, Scott.
You're welcome. That was helpful, because one way to look at it is that roughly seventy percent of the property doesn't have buildings on it. So theoretically, if you only need forty percent for a park, and you're working with seventy percent, you ought to be able to come up with it. However, obviously, not all seventy percent is available for a park. He needs, he needs driveways, he needs parking lots. And he wants some other property specifically for hotel guests. That makes perfect sense. So while he starts out with seventy percent of the pie to work with, it's gonna get whittled down pretty quick in that forty percent range. And that's that's the finding I do not believe he made adequately before the Planning Commission, he being a veto. But certainly, I can say that conceptually, there ought to be a way to get forty percent open space if you're starting out with a total of seventy percent to work with. However, I'm not sure you can do that with this particular layout. And I am also not sure that if if the spirit of the Planning Commission's discussion and deliberation about the meaning of park is followed. You know, I'm not, I'm not sure that we have a whole lot of that seventy percent to work with. You know, we we probably have a whole lot closer to low forties to work with. And that's why I just want to make sure that, you know, if we were to go down this path, there would be a there would still be a significant hurdle for the applicant to get over on condition F. And I want to make sure that we understand what condition F means and how the Planning Commission's deliberation would be involved in condition F and how the public's right to be heard would be protected within condition F. So, I mean, I don't, I I'm personally not comfortable, I wouldn't be comfortable asking the applicant right now on the record, on the spot, to agree to an extension of the clock. I I would love for that to happen, but I don't think it's fair or appropriate to put the question to him. I do think that the applicant now knows that a majority of council disagrees with his position on dwelling units and therefore the applicability of the density standard.
So my understanding, Jerry, of F is that there's no building permit allowed until that has been satisfied. So
Yeah, I agree. But 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 I agree, and I and I think that's a very significant and important point, but we still need to come to terms, given the, everything we know about this case and the community's passion on it. We still need to come to terms with how that condition will in fact be met and and what process will will be used to meet it. So Leila's laid it out, and I I understand it, and I have faith in staff to properly execute on that condition, both both as long as Savani's suggestion is is taken, and that is that the Planning Commission's definition of park controls. And how to make that happen is a little tricky. I mean, it's, you know, if 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 the Planning Commission were formally a part of that condition F process, that would work, but that's not, that's not the way it's set up.
Right. And I am assuming that we are going to be reviewing those findings. And my question to our city manager, because I think that's the key, can we, as a condition, condition to accepting this, ask that the Planning Commission be involved in defining a park for the city? And that it be a public process so that there's input from the community?
I'll look for Savani to pop up if I misspeak here. But you read my mind. So if you end up conditioning the approval, my first thought was, I want to have a work session with the Planning Commission to help further define what their intention was in terms of the definition of a park. And that will allow us to more formalize their intent, because I also sat through those hearings. And while there was some good feedback, there was a lot of discussion that well, let's just say, wasn't entirely clear throughout the proceedings. And so for staff to be successful in this, I think that it would be incumbent on us to work with the Planning Commission to develop a clearer understanding of what constitutes a park. Because it is subject to interpretation, lacking a definition. We've had a case like this before, a previous council with a previous Planning Commission made a very different determination in terms of what constituted open space with respect to classic street cottages. Staff can't rely on that because the Planning Commission that we have now is making a different interpretation as they are allowed to do. And so I think that would be the first step that I would want to take in collaboration with the applicant is to have that discussion with the Planning Commission, get clear direction from the Planning Commission. And that will just be kind of doing some work ahead of us for not the potential, for sure, addition of a definition of a park in our zoning ordinance. But it would certainly give staff and the Planning Commission, should they have another PUD come before them in the next year, which is quite possible, that would help sort of vet that process as well for future applicants short of us making the formal amendment to the ordinance. So I think, I didn't see Savani pop up, so I think I can do that. And that would be that would be the steps I would take, because I want very clear direction. And then I would work with the applicant to implement that direction.
Okay, so to go back to the decision then that we need to make now, and Jerry and Leila, please correct me and Savani if I'm wrong. Right now, the decision is, is there adequate space on the parcel of land to dedicate forty percent to to open space slash park? With the understanding that in a finding, we will clarify how we come up with utilizing our excellent Planning Commission, utilizing their input to determine what a park, how how it should be designed? Is that, Jerry, do you agree with that as where we are right now?
I I think that's what we're considering right now. And I think it's important to say out loud what I'm thinking, not just because I'm thinking it, I think you're thinking it. I hope our colleagues are thinking it. The process that Leila just laid out could happen because the hundred and twenty day clock wouldn't be ticking, because we would have approved the application with a condition. If we do not do so, the likelihood is we will deny the application on one of the two issues. And we will be back before Luba. So if we think that on the one critical remaining issue in this case, which has been funneled down through an extended process, essentially to two issues, if we think on the one critical issue that we are close enough to close the gap with a another round of Planning Commission consideration of what is a park and how much of the available seventy percent could possibly be set aside for a park, I think that's a very worthwhile option to consider as opposed to going a different way that is going to result in further litigation.
Yes, and reiterating again, everything you just said, and the fact that the, that they will, that the law will not go forward until those findings have been met. So there's if if they, if if together, we can't meet the findings, which I think is, I don't know whether it's a possibility or not, but if they can't meet the findings, then we do not go forward. If they need the findings with the with the assistance of the Planning Commission in the definition of a park, that brings clarity to not only this development, but potentially PUDs in the near future. Because we will have defined a park. So are we, are there any other questions or comments? I just want to make one other comment, because I, to me, it's it's important and I'm strong positive. I I think a path along Classic direct next to Classic is a huge community benefit in terms of what the what the law can bring. So I think that's important to consider as well. So Jerry?
Yes.
Yes.
Well, I thought you were gonna ask me a question.
Oh, no, what's your vote? I'm sorry, what's your vote?
Well, my my vote would be that we on this issue, that we approve, well, you can't, my understanding is you can't really approve the application issue by issue. There's two issues. We probably should dispense with the second issue. Well, I'm not, I'm not sure. I I I mean, my vote, if we're gonna take a vote right now, my vote would be to incorporate the Planning Commission into a process in order to fully implement and execute condition F as a condition of approval. But, you know, that's a that's a piecemeal vote. We haven't voted on either the second issue or the other fourteen conditions. And I do see that, I think I saw Vito's hand up. I don't know if that's taking testimony, but he might, might be able to help us out here.
Savani, can we allow Vito to speak?
Uh, I I just wanted to make sure we're really clear on one one point first. So the 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 Planning Commission is not going, the council is the final decision maker in this matter. The Planning Commission isn't, the process will be over in terms of everything except for implementing the conditions after the council make its, makes its decision today. And that's whichever way it goes. The the staff could, is appropriate and looking to the Planning Commission for assistance on determining what a park is. But if the the condition is approved, then it's up to staff and the applicant to work together to implement that arrangement on this property. So there's not going, the decision won't be remade in any way through that process. I just wanted to make sure that everybody's clear on that.
I understand that, but we could amend the condition F to include language consistent with Leila's proposal of a work session, right?
Which, which Planning Commission to weigh in on the definition of a park?
To, yes, to assist staff, but that that will not, that won't change. So basically, that's, that wouldn't impact the approval or the ability of the applicant to meet that standard. It would just be the staff getting guidance from the Planning Commission about what that what the park is. And I do think it would be because we're, we are into the conditions portion of the decision here, I do think it would be appropriate to hear from the applicant about whether or not that they would accept that condition.
Okay, Vito?
Yeah, I guess, to start off, just like with the the lack of definition with with respective park in the code and you know, what I've followed for the last year and a half or two years is the definition of the ordinance with classic street cottages. So I followed that with with every with every, you know, application and site plan that I've that I've submitted and the design intent. But I I feel like we could go in circles. I know it's been brought up by some of the councilmen that there's definition from Planning Commission on what a park was or what it wasn't. But I mean, I would guess that if I wrote down what they had listed as a park versus Jerry or Linda or Leila, we've all come up with different answers. So I'm kind of worried that this is going to create a a cycle that is hard to get out of. Again, I've been trying to follow the code. I'm not asking for any variances. So part of, part of this, I guess, conditions of approval that I most, most likely be willing to accept is, is just dropping to six point five units per acre and meeting the definition of, so it'd be twenty five units, which would meet the code without this forty percent allocation of space. And this, I guess, lacking information of what outdoor open space park, private park is. I mean, there's parks all over the country that are are varied, varied designs. And if if the city doesn't have it, I I would almost take the approach of reducing my unit count to just get it through the this definition of what a park or park is or park isn't. Again, I was just following the zoning ordinance that classic street cottages use to get their acreage and their unit density. I have not, had had no intent to go into this application trying to bend the rules or ask for any special circumstances to the code. And if we look at previous staff reports, it's kind of, everything's been outright approval. So that's one of the conditions that I'm willing to talk about today is that we just reduce it to six point five acre or units, which would be twenty five for three point eight one acres of land. Seems like that would eliminate the need for this open space.
Thank you, Vito. Any, anything, any other comment along that line? Any, anything, any other comment along that line? Cause I, I, what I'd like to do next is go to Suvani, I believe, and see how that might impact our decision.
Uh, well, the only, the only reason that we're discussing the density standard is to get this, um, this thirteen units per acre. And if the applicant is, um, is agreeing that they don't need thirteen units per acre and is bringing to reduce the units so that it will meet the, that there's no need to meet this heightened density standard, then there is no need to discuss whether or not, um, it's a park or whether or not forty percent can be dedicated to make it a park. Of course, you'd lose the, the park aspect of the project or potentially would lose the, the park aspect of the project. But that's really within the, I mean, the, if the applicant is not seeking that addition, the thirteen units per acre, then this condition just doesn't apply.
I, maybe I can't ask this question, but.
Mayor, you can't ask the question. I'm sorry.
Okay, okay. So let me, but.
I bet you're gonna answer it.
Um, so seeing as there's some, uh, I just want to make sure that we're really clear on that. So the overall density standard for the SRR zone is six point five dwell, dwellings per gross acre. And so, I mean, assuming the math, the applicant's math is correct, and maybe Scott can help us out with that. Um, if the, if the proposed use meets that standard, then there's no need to go into the second level of analysis where dwellings may be clustered on one portion of a site within the SRR zone and achieve a maximum density of thirteen dwellings per acre, but only when at least forty percent of the total lot or parcel is reserved or dedicated as permanent open space as a public or private park. So that forty percent only really kicks in if there's thirteen dwelling units per acre that are sought as part of the proposal. And if the applicant is going to, would agree to a condition of approval that scales the project back to the, to meet the six point five units, then there's no need to assess whether the forty percent that's dedicated could be a park or not because they don't need to dedicate forty percent as a park. They just would meet the standard.
But they still need to meet the next, which is the traffic impact on traffic?
Yes, so there's, so yeah, so there's still two, um, that one, that one applies regardless of the density standard. It's just that the, these two pieces work together. It's either six point five dwelling units with no dedication of open space or park or forty, or thirteen dwelling units per acre with a forty percent designation. And so basically, it would just, um, just eliminates the need to, to have this discussion about the forty percent. And the, the way that staff would address that would be to revise condition F to, um, state that the, it's a condition of approval that six point five, there'll only be six point five dwelling units per gross acre.
Okay, um, this is, this is an interesting, interesting solution. Um, and I, I, uh, thank Vito for thinking outside of the box or maybe inside the box. I guess my first reaction is I'm really, I was really looking forward to forty percent park because, um, I think that makes the appearance and, um, usage of that area much more attractive, uh, in terms of, you know, the look of the, of the, uh, of the, of those buildings, uh, and the, the landscaping that would go into that. But I'm certainly open to, uh, any discussion or any other thoughts uh, about whether we want to move, whether, whether that's something we want to go forward or, um, what the next step would be. So Jerry, what are you thinking?
Well, uh, and I'm gonna turn to Suvani again, or maybe Leila on this. But, um, you know, we just had, uh, two well-attended, uh, and lengthy planning commission meetings in which a particular concept was under review. And the public, uh, had noticed of those and weighed in, uh, loudly and clearly, uh, not always with, uh, as much relevance as passion, but I appreciate, uh, the community's, uh, attention to this. Um, and now, uh, at the eleventh hour, uh, we look like we might be going in a completely different direction, which renders an awful lot of the discussion, not all of it, but a lot, awful lot of the discussion in those two planning commission meetings, uh, moot. And I, I just wonder, I mean, I, you know, I don't, because I'm not on the planning commission and I don't have, um, that background or expertise. I don't know whether things could have gone differently, if there might have been other issues, if there might have been other, uh, concerns had, um, what Vito just proposed been the focus of both well-attended, uh, planning commission meetings. So I'm a little, you know, it, it does sound like a, uh, potential solution to the stalemate here. Uh, I think everybody always knew, uh, that if the density didn't, density standard didn't apply, we knew what, uh, um, oh, excuse me, uh, we, we knew what, uh, the standard would be if there was not a clustering of units. But, you know, there was, uh, I don't know, I think there were eight or nine hours worth of, uh, hearings and a lot of energy went into both of those on both sides, uh, both before and afterwards. And I, I don't know whether shifting gears at this late hour, um, means that there would have been no possibility for other issues or other concerns to be aired had Vito made that proposal out of the gate. So if you can tell me that, um, all we've lost is nine hours worth of time, uh, and that nobody has waived any rights or opportunities to argue other issues had they known what the direction was back at that May meeting, uh, that's, that's one thing. But, and, and I, and I'm not blaming Vito for this, but, you know, uh, unfortunately, one of the things that we've heard, uh, from the community, uh, is that there have been a lot of moving targets here. There've been a lot of changes on the fly. There've been a lot of, you know, adjustments, uh, as the process has unfolded. This is the ultimate, uh, change on the fly. And so I don't want to be a party to it if I can, i- if I, if I can avoid it, uh, unless, uh, there is no, uh, consequence to, you know, in terms of anybody giving up any arguments or, or opportunities, uh, for a different outcome.
I think that's an excellent question, Jerry. Suvani?
Well, I'll just, I'll just speak to the standard itself. And and I, it does, this will not address the concerns about the, the amount of time and effort that was put into the discussion on the density standard. But if the proposal had always proposed six point five dwelling units per gross acre, then that wouldn't have been a discussion that we would have had, that the council would have had, that the planning commission would have been before the planning commission. So there, there are not, there are not, um, waived opportunities, in my view, based on that shift. It's just that there was, as you pointed out, a, a big portion of this that would be rendered, um, unnecessary. And the other, the other comment that I have is, is about the, which I think th- this is certainly the most streamlined way to move forward because the, this wouldn't, the density standard just doesn't apply if the applicant is agreeing to six point five dwelling units. I do see the hesitation about, and I think if you, I think what, I don't want to speak for the applicant, but, um, if you were going to go the other way or if the council was still considering the other way, it seems like it would need to, on its own, decide what is a park so that there's a, a standard that everybody knows now before the decision is made moving forward. Um, and that would be the direction to staff. And maybe that does include some guidance from the planning commission, but not this continued discussion about it. And so perhaps the more streamlined way is, is just to move forward with the, if you're not, if you're not interested in continuing that conversation and trying to work out with the applicant what a park would look like and being very clear about that now, then the, the solution would be to just determine whether or not the density standard of six point five dwelling units could be met with a condition of approval of twenty-five dwelling units only. And then that would decide the issue.
So what you just said, just so I'm sure I understand it, is that that, that change can be made mid-process? Or in this process, maybe I should say?
Yes, I mean, I, I think that if the applicant is willing to accept that as a condition of approval, then to avoid a reman, to avoid the whole Luba process going, you know, the reman, the time, um, and effort and expense of this, for the city and all the parties, that that's, that's the appropriate decision is that if this use, if the applicant's going to agree to that condition, that's the most efficient way forward.
And do we, do we have the ability to reject that and continue forward? Or because it is, um, submitted by the applicant as a way to move this without going to Luba, uh, that, that we, that we're required to accept his proposal?
I think that the, um, the, it gets back to that question of can this be, can this, it's not, is this condition met by the exact proposal? But is it, can this condition be met with a, or can this criteria be met with a condition of approval? And this is a very clear way for this criteria to be met with a condition of approval. It's not one that the council or the city knew that was available to it until this hearing, but it is an option at this time.
Uh, may I call on Vito to make a comment?
Yeah, I was, I just want to make a comment. It's the, the biggest, the application has been very similar from the start. The moving target has been trying to determine what a park or park is or isn't with the trails. So yes, I agree, there's been some changes, but it's also because the lack of definition of how to go about creating that open space. And so there's, there's never been a change in the building locations, the building design, the building ideas. All I've been doing is adding per request, whether it's the storm drainage, the traffic studies, the, the, um, the additional information required for planning commission or city council review. So with, with, I guess, like giving up the, this density code and dropping to twenty-five, I'm not intending to change the layout of this application. I would just simply be reducing the number of units, um, with respect to getting down to that twenty-five, which would be the six point five. So, I mean, I, I understand there's been moving targets, but the moving targets has been this open space and the discussion of open space and what is or what isn't defined as a park. And I guess, I just feel like this could go on in circles. So I'm willing to drop down to the other definition of code that doesn't require any, you know, I guess insight on what, what a park is and just keep with the layout, but dropping down to the unit count that would meet the code. So I just want to point that out. I'm not trying to modify the, the, the application outside of just reducing the count also.
And then i- in that, uh, I know you presented, uh, options for landscaping. Um, the property would be landscaped?
The property would be landscaped. I mean, the goal, like I said, from the, the very first application is the, the intent of this is to really have a natural setting and, you know, as close, I mean, it's a beautiful grounds. I don't think I can get that far, but as close to like, uh, coast cabins as possible. Like really make it lush and beautiful for the property and the people at this parcel of land in this hotel development and as well as the neighborhood. So yes, the goal would be to landscape it and make it, make it a nice space.
Okay, and just one other question along that line. I think you've agreed to, and I just, I, uh, can't remember if I saw it or thought it, that, uh, part of your plan is to put fairly large trees along the edge to prevent, to be a noise, um, barrier?
Yes, I mean, yeah, so definitely have some buffer, I mean, not to impact views from Classic Street, but to have trees and, and buffer. And again, I, 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 I think, I'm hoping that this is a good compromise to all and it doesn't create this long-lasting, you know, definition of park, the chance of going back to Luba and going back through this whole process. And, you know, again, I've tried to work with the city and, uh, there's been some restrictions with communication at that point, like I pointed out last time. But, um, I just would rather not continue to battle through state, through Luba, through the city, through planning commission. And I feel like this is a good, good route to potentially have the benefit of, of all, so.
My, thank you, Vito.
Can I just, can I just get a, uh, clarity on the, the reduction in units, uh, from somewhere in the high thirties down to low mid twenties? Is that it?
It would, my calculations is it's at thirty-four now. It would be dropping down to, uh, twenty-five units.
Twenty-five?
Which would be the six point five per acre. I can have Scott or Leila to confirm that, but that's, that's my count.
That's correct.
Well, Suvani, if I can ask, uh, a procedural question. It, it, the only reason we're sitting here today is, uh, is to review a, um, decision by the planning commission uh, on particular issues. Um, and it seems to me that, um, we can make rulings on the two issues that the planning commission, um, has already considered. Uh, and if that results in a denial of, uh, the application, uh, Vito's not prejudiced. He can certainly bring forward, uh, a new application proposing to use the six point five, uh, um, density. Um, I, I don't see how we, I don't, it doesn't feel right for Linda and I in particular, but Linda and I, Brad and Deb, to make any kind of a, uh, quasi judicial ruling on this new proposal that wasn't before the planning commission. Um, so it, it, isn't the cleanest way to go to just, um, if we're inclined to do so, to, to decline the plan that was based on the, uh, forty percent rule? And then, uh, Vito will know, uh, the clear direction to move forward with?
I can't say what Luba would do with that.
Well, o- okay, uh, you can't, no, you can't. But I guess I was reading into Vito's comments that, uh, Luba would be off the table in the sense that if, you know, if, if, if we're closing the door on the seventy percent plan, seventy, excuse me, uh, forty percent plan, then the other door is still open, uh, to Vito.
I guess I am, um, if it, I do think it's possible to implement this as a condition of approval. And I'm not sure, so I guess my, my concern is I'm not sure whether Luba would consider that a requirement, whether Luba would require there to be a new plan or a new application to propose that situation? Or whether Luba would look at this and say, no, that was an appropriate condition of approval? There was an opportunity for the council to, the city to meet this condition? And the application should be approved?
Or would it even go to Luba?
I do believe it would go to, I do believe it would go to.
Even at, even at the twenty-four or twenty-five number, it would still go to Luba?
Um, well, yes, because there's still, I mean, this is the twenty-five number. I also understand the applicant and I see that there's another hand raised. But I also understand that the applicant, um, still disagrees that the dwelling units apply.
Well, okay.
And so that at a minimum would be an issue for Luba.
Well, I think Mr.
But I suppose we can let.
But isn't, but isn't the dwelling unit issue mooted by Vito changing directions?
No.
Why not?
No, so, um, the applicant, so yeah, and that's, that's sort of an important piece of the land use process overall. So. No. So um, the applicant, so yeah, and that's, that's sort of an important piece of the land use process overall. So um, applicants often take different positions. So it's basically like throughout this process, the applicant has um, noted that they do not agree with the dwelling standard being there, the dwelling units being applied to hotel units and that the density standard um, therefore should not apply. But even but taking that aside, have essentially agreed not to appeal um, that determination if or to accept a condition of approval that the 40% be applied um, if all the parties could agree on a on a park, the definition of the park, which I believe is, that's my understanding what the applicant's issue is now, is that that's not entirely clear what the park is defined as. Um, applicants often will take that sort of a position where they maintain the objection um, with the some interpretation that the decision maker is making, but will say basically if if we can work something out, then I won't appeal that. I won't take that to Luba, even though I've maintained this objection throughout. So no, I do not believe that Luba would would um, I don't believe that Luba would hold that the applicant has waived that position.
I guess what I'm understanding is that Vito would proceed in a different direction entirely, which would take the the clustering issue off the table. What it would be a a decision with which he disagrees, but with which he's unconcerned if he goes.
That that I don't, I think that's what applicant is, sorry to interrupt. I I do think that's what the applicant is saying is that if if the applicant's agreeing to accept a condition of approval of 6.5 units, then that would not be, that would not go to Luba.
Okay, so the applicant's attorney is waiting to speak. Should we listen to get his input, Jerry?
Sure.
Okay. Mr. Peterson, would you please?
Yes, thank you. Um, so I'll just clarify what uh, Savuni has Savani has been assuming. Uh, if you impose this condition of approval requiring finding that this criteria is met, but requiring them to reduce the density to 6.5 units per acre, we will not appeal the decision, the determination that hotels are dwelling units, and we will not appeal the applicability of the condition. Uh, if you go any other route, uh, mainly a denial, then we are going to appeal both of those issues. So that's where this is going to go if uh, if if you don't accept our offer to for this condition, which I think solves your problem, quite frankly. Uh, and this is, of course, also um, all contingent on a favorable finding on the next criteria, which we haven't even even heard a discussion of yet. And then just the last thing I I will tell you is the applicant is not going to be willing to extend the clock for any uh, subsequent planning commission proceedings. There's too much time and money into this application and we can't wait another six or eight weeks for that.
Okay, that clarifies issues. Thank you.
So Savani? Uh, obviously, I don't know how um, Brad or or Deb would uh, feel about this particular possibility, but um, if if we were to go in the direction that uh, Mr. Peterson just suggested, then in a perfect world, we'll never have to worry about whether or not we botch the procedure here at the end and Luba would be upset with us. But I I guess I want to make sure it seems to me that that, you know, I may be on the verge of voting for something that I never um,
considered.
Took any evidence on. Uh, I I'm only here today to make a on the record review of the planning commission's uh, decision. Um, this plan was not before them, or at least not uh, actively uh, considered in either the two um hearings I listened to. So I just want to, it it strikes me as odd that we're doing this if we do it. Um, the idea doesn't strike me as odd. The process strikes me as odd and that's not your fault. It's not my fault. It's not the fault of uh, the rule of necessities. It's just a weird situation we're in and I'm trying to uh, get us to the finish line uh, with as less weirdness as possible, least weirdness as possible. So if you, you know, we just have now had effectively, it feels like testimony uh, in a deliberation as opposed to even a hearing. If we had a hearing, we wouldn't uh, welcome testimony. But now we are in deliberation and we're welcoming testimony. So uh, you're the city attorney, uh, and I'm going to certainly be guided by you. I just want to make sure that, and I know it's hard because we're all we're all dancing on the on the fly here, but uh, I just want to make sure it's okay for us to even consider this uh, proposal.
Well, oh, yeah, a couple of, so the the city does have a lot of power. So I do think maybe a piece that's been missed here is that the city always had the power to impose this as a condition of approval. Um, it was just a question of whether or not the applicant would accept it, and that piece hasn't been part of the discussion. So this was always, I think, a possibility for the city to take. It's just not a route that the city felt was available because that wasn't the proposal, which I think is part of your concern here is that this specific plan wasn't before the city. Um, I'm not um, there are also some strange aspects to the procedure and the land use proceeding where there's sort of two pieces. You have to determine on the record whether the condition can be met. And then there's the second piece, which I believe is what has happened during deliberations today, where there's some ability to negotiate back and forth with the applicant about whether or not that condition of approval will be accepted. Because if it is accepted by all the, if you agree that this condition could be met in one way or another, either by the 40% for the park with the 13 units or with the two, the 6.5 dwelling units and no park, then that really is a determination that it is possible for the application to meet the criteria with conditions. So that's the piece that happens on the record. Then it, I think the confusing piece is that there's also this discussion about whether or not those conditions are acceptable to the city and whether or not those there are the what conditions of approval need to go into place. And I think that's the piece of the conversation that we've been having today, which isn't accepting new evidence as much as it is trying to determine what conditions the city will impose onto the application after it's just made its determination that it is possible or like it while it's still considering whether it's possible for the application to meet these standards based on the record. So there's really two things that are happening. So I don't think that that's um, considering new evidence during deliberations.
Okay.
So I I'm wondering if Leila has any input on that? Or any additional information she'd like to share?
No, I just obviously concur with Savani and that negotiations, if it if if the criteria can be met, it is appropriate to have discussions on the findings. And that's what happened here. So I would just concur with what Savani did say, and it is not uncommon for that to occur in a proceeding like this.
Good.
So do we, so again, Savani, does this mean since the applicant has presented that and there ergo is no issue around park? Do we vote on whether we accept that or do we assume that because there's no uh, requirement for 40% open space, it does not need a vote?
Um, you would still need the, the council would still need to make a finding that this standard is met, whether that's by the 6.5 dwelling units or by the 13 dwelling units per acre with a park. So there's, there still needs to be a determination on that. And the other thing I, you know, we've, we've only heard from the applicant. I've um,
Is Sean here? Are you talking?
Yeah, and I don't know that that would be because that doesn't, that doesn't necessarily can uh, it's not the same sort of um, situation if the if the opposing parties are participating because it's not a discussion about, may not be considered a discussion about the um, conditions of approval, but I just wanted to ca- caution or just let the council know that um, this is my read of the the process and this is my read of the uh, the code. But there may be other perspectives um, from other people that you will not hear because we are not doing a public hearing.
So I back to process then. So at this point, the 40% is not an issue. So we don't need to vote on it. But when we go, i- if if it is accepted, if this application is accepted, which we still have one more piece to determine, then we would go to findings and would determine those findings. Uh, and that would, would that be a vote or would that, is that a discussion between staff?
Oh, on the findings note, yeah, that would continue to be a a discussion amongst council and you could ask questions of staff about what those um, conditions mean and what they require. And then would vote to approve the conditions or modify them.
Okay, okay. So that if if we, that's yet to come. So at this point, just to be, make sure I'm clear, this point we would move to the C, you know, to B, which is the determination based on the record that the streets are adequate to support anticipated traffic and the development will not overload the streets outside the planned area. Is that correct?
Um, I
Or do we need to have more discussion about the?
I don't know that you need more discussion. I think if the um, that you could wrap this, then so the council does need to make a determination and have findings so that staff can put them in the um, final written decision about whether or not this proposed use can meet the density standard if there's a condition of approval for 6.5 dwelling units.
And that we would do now?
You could do that now or at the or at the end. I think it might be appropriate to do now.
Now, okay. So essentially, and again, correct me if I'm wrong, essentially what we are doing now or the vote now is do we accept the applicant's um, decision to take the building units from 32 to 25? Ergo, not
34.
Not uh, requiring uh, 40% open space uh, slash park. Is that correct or?
I might phrase it slightly differently. It's can the can the application meet the overall density standard, which is 6.5 dwelling units per gross acre or alternatively meet the 13 dwelling units per acre with the park? So can it meet one of those? And the applicant has agreed that it can meet the the 6.5 dwelling units.
Okay. So we're, we're picking either A or B? And we are, should we, should we look at A and then look at B or can we determine in a vote?
Well, can it meet either one, I think is the question for now.
Okay. So Jerry?
Well, I wish I was a planning commissioner. Uh, I mean, as a uh, person with a calculator in my hand, I think I can divide uh, the acreage by 6.5 and come out with uh, the number that Vito is suggesting. If that's if that's the only calculation necessary, then I think he can meet that standard.
All right. Um, I I agree that with the the uh, 25 cabins, he does meet the standard uh, and not requiring 40% open space slash park. Brad?
Uh, I I don't know. You guys have got me so confused. Uh, I'm just gonna say no.
Okay. Uh, Mayor Simmons?
Um, I can only say yes or no. Does it meet or not meet?
Correct.
I uh, am going to accept the planning commission's determination. So I am with Brad at a no.
Okay.
Well, the planning commission didn't consider, I don't believe, uh, at least not off the record. So you, I, I'm not challenging your vote, but I don't think you can.
Yeah.
Yeah.
I can't say that.
No, you're right. I'm sorry.
So the the vote is no. So we have a two-two split. Um, so Savani, um, does this uh, issue, because if this is a no, it's, I mean, it it is, it means that we're rejecting, ultimately rejecting this uh, application. Uh, do we have the alter uh, the ability to uh, have further discussions to maybe clarify for Brad and Mayor?
Yes. Yes, I think so. Um, if there are questions of either council member, I mean, I think the so the the overarching question for each of these, the two issues, the traffic issue and the density standard issue, is can the proposal meet these two criteria? And the criteria for the density standard is in two pieces. First of all, you can meet the density standard by um, having 6.5 dwelling units per gross acre. And then second of all, if you want more units than that, you can have up to 13 dwelling units per gross acre if you dedicate 40% of the total lot or parcel area as a public or private park. Um, we've been discussing that second piece of the standard. That's been the focus. But there is throughout been this opportunity, this um, alternative piece that there be 6.5 dwelling units per gross acre, which would also meet the density standard. The applicant has agreed um, to accept that the density standard applies and to accept the 6.5 dwelling units per gross acre at this point in the proceeding. So the question before the council is whether is, I think, as Councilor Spigman put forth, it's essentially a a math question of whether this per the lot is capable of holding up to 25 units based on this second, this other density standard, so 6.5 dwelling units.
Can we, can I just get the gross acreage again?
166.
No, acreage of, you could.
Oh, sorry.
3.81.
3.81.
Which comes out to 24.77 units per gross acre.
Okay, and how do you deal with that? Do you round up or down?
That's not my decision.
I got it.
Would that would be, would that be part of the findings?
Yes.
Okay. So I, the the what's, what is glaring to me in terms of the difference of what we were discussing before and what we were discussing now, before we were discussing the long and really intense discussion of the planning commission focused on the design or or where exactly that 40% would be and 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 they rejected the applicant's for lack of a better word, design of where that 40% would be. At this point, we're not talking about that any longer. We're talking about space available. And we're talking about two options. One option requires 40% open space slash park. The other option, which the applicant provided today, we don't need to consider open space at all because it meets the criteria uh in our ordinance. So what we are voting on right now, I believe, is do we accept the lower number of dwellings on the location with the understanding that the definition and the clarity of that will be part of the findings? So that there's no question. Uh it it's it's not left up to guess. It's what we're voting on today. So what we're voting on is do do we agree that the zoning regulations allow for the twenty-four units on that space? And I believe at the concurrence of both our legal counsel and our city manager agrees that that's possible.
Yes. And
I, I'm sorry.
Well, I would just add um one other comment that I hope will help. Savani, you can correct me if I'm wrong and the applicant correct me if I'm wrong. But the site plan will not differ substantially than what's been submitted. So that is just something to factor in as well. There will just be less on the site. It will change, obviously, but it won't substantially differ from the site plan that has been proposed. There'll just be less units. Um, and I'll be glad to be corrected if that is not the case. But hopefully that can, is helpful in your deliberations.
Okay, so that would actually lead to a question I had. Uh I am looking at it as a a math problem. Uh but that's because I am assuming we don't need to, we would not need to concern ourselves today with how Vito's gonna reduce the units. He could obviously reduce uh the cabins, the studios or the micro cabins or some combination of all three. We, but we don't, that's not that's not something we or the planning commission for that matter would be getting into at this point.
Right, that's correct.
So the number of uh dwelling units permitted um per gross acre doesn't dictate the size or location of those dwelling units. That's a whole different consideration. I guess.
So is there?
I guess to to just limit that, so the the number is really and remember, we're not at the beginning of the planning process. This is, you know, the issues have been narrowed by Luba. They've been narrowed by the planning mission. So really, the number is what's before the council today.
Right. But but I I just want to be clear that so the of of the the three kinds of units that are being proposed, they're all dwelling units in the in the uh conclusion of the planning commission. Um, but of the three different kinds of units, uh I believe they are of three different sizes essentially. And Vito will be left to decide which of the units to eliminate. So he could theoretically have uh if, assuming that the uh the cabins are the biggest, he could have keep his full number of cabins or maybe more cabins, but that's not for us. That's
Our decision.
We're just looking at uh can he meet the six point five per gross acre?
I think your comment before was spot on. We're we're looking at the math.
Alright.
Yes, and and you, uh just to refresh your recollection, the approval um the approval, one of the conditions of approval that staff has recommended is that it's limited to the layout submitted and approved as part of this application. And so it would just be reducing some of those units and not, as Leila pointed out, substantially changing the layout.
Well, I, I mean, I'm I think the way the the uh question was called was a little uh cumbersome. Uh nobody's fault. This has been cumbersome from day one, but um can we ask for a vote of council on whether or not Vito can meet the six point five per gross acre?
That's pretty straightforward. Um I, Savani, I would say yes. Okay, so Savani uh concurs. So the the vote is on whether this application can meet the six point five per acre by reducing the number to twenty-four. Am I, Jerry, do you agree with that statement?
I do.
Okay, I just want to make sure we're all on the same page. So Jerry, what is your vote?
I vote that he can meet that standard.
I agree. Brad?
Boy, I really wish I could say something, but uh
I really wish I could too.
I guess, I guess math is math, so. Yeah.
Alright, so we have three in favor, so it passes. Is that correct, Savani? Okay.
That's correct.
So now we're going to traffic. So I'm gonna go back. I'm gonna reread this since we've kind of been way off on another tangent. Um so B, with respect to MZO four point one three six, three, C, five, the city council must determine whether, based on the evidence in the record, the streets are adequate to support the anticipated traffic and the development will not overload the streets outside of the planned area. If the evidence shows that streets are adequate to support the anticipated traffic and the development will not overload the streets outside the planned area, it it should be, it should determine that this criteria criterion is met. If the evidence, if the evidence shows that the streets are inadequate to support the anticipated traffic or that the development will overload the streets outside the planned area, it should determine that this criterion is not met. So with that, I uh I hate to do this, but we are limited, so I'm gonna turn again to Jerry for his input.
Okay, um I've got a first note that obviously with uh less units, uh there will be presumably less traffic, but I'm not using that uh analysis as part of my my decision here because we don't have evidence on that either. What we do know is that Luba was not satisfied with the evidence uh put forth by um the city or the or the um uh intervenor in the um first round. Uh Luba sent it back. Um, and I believe in the second round, uh no significant um uh evidence was offered to uh recover from that uh deficit that Luba had uh had noted. Uh I think that uh when I listened to the planning commission discuss the density uh rule, I heard a very, very uh uh healthy and and ultimately uh unanimous discussion um on the uh uh the applicability and the definition of park. Uh I heard much more equivocation on parking. I know their vote was five nothing, but I think it sort of fluctuated from three to two to two to three and it, you know, they landed on five nothing be, I assume because they vote um with the majority as as a practice perhaps, but uh there was much more equivocation, understandably so. There was not um, there was not any more significant evidence uh uh to support the uh intervenors uh position uh in the in the second round after Luba sent it back down. On the other hand, the uh applicant did um present a uh a traffic study uh that was uh uh scoped by the city's consultant and and blessed by the city's consultant and honestly, I think there are legitimate issues raised for sure by the community and by the intervenor. But I do believe that they can be addressed um through uh efforts by our public safety and our public works department and uh uh they are uh touched on at least a little bit in the in the conditions, one of the conditions. And so you know, I I I think this one is just an easier call. It's 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 not that uh I'm saying uh this large project is not going to change the nature of uh classic street traffic or Dorcas uh traffic. Uh but I did not see uh substantial evidence in the record uh to suggest that um the streets will be overloaded by this project. Impacted, absolutely, uh not overloaded. Um, and I think that the uh evidence to the contrary was uh uh thorough and and persuasive. So I would uh disagree with the planning commission's um uh conclusion on the parking uh on the traffic issue.
Okay, so um I I I was uh moved uh by the comments of many of the citizens. I I think that's the same expression you just agreed with Jerry. Um I I do think that that there will be an impact on classic. But in talking to the traffic engineer, um and we're not engineers, so I uh Chair Yurka pointed out quite clearly, and I feel the same way. Um we're not necessarily a technical expert, so we really do need to rely on the engineering studies. And in the questions posed to the traffic engineer, both from the scoping letter and from the applicant's response, it appeared that they had taken all of those issues into account. And there was no quantifiable data that did not, that that did not support the adequacy of the streets uh and particularly um the driveway onto Dorcas. Um they did take into account pedestrian and bike traffic, which was one of my big concerns. Uh and they came up with quantifiable, quantifiable data that uh supported that the streets were adequate. I will note that in our um plan for the future, Dorcas is high on the list um for appropriate uh development and expansion. We have, it's not there yet. There's lots to do that we need to do, but it is certainly uh on the council's mind and on the city manager's mind as well. So I would concur with the traffic engineer's analysis that the streets are capable of supporting the traffic, particularly now that the number of dwellings has been reduced. Brad?
Sure.
I'm sorry, what?
Sure, yes.
Yes, okay. So three people have voted in support of approval of the traffic report. Um, so next is determination on application. The options before the council are as follows. Uh uphold the planning commission's decision to deny the application. The answer to that is no. Uphold the planning commission's decision with modified fan findings. Reverse the planning commission's decision and establish finding as findings as to why the application complies with the remand criteria. If the council chooses this action, it will need to determine what conditions of approval should attach to the application. And I believe that is the determination that we chose. So the question, assuming that that's correct, so the question now uh is with um Leila, and that is do we now sit down and go over each of the findings?
Yes.
Okay. And uh we've been on the line for two and a half hours. I think we all deserve a break. So I am wondering if we could have about a ten-minute break to kind of get a cup of coffee, do whatever we need to do. Is that, or Jerry, are you okay with that?
I am.
Okay. Brad, are you okay with that?
I'm fine.
Alright, Mayor, are you okay with that?
Thank you.
Okay, great. So we will be back. Let me get, so we'll be back at uh twenty-five, two, one, or twelve thirty-five. Thank you. Okay, it is 12:36. So I'll give people a few more minutes. Come back for a minute or so. All right, Leila. Do you want to, I have, I can put the findings on my screen, but it might be better for either you or Scott to put it on your screen to make whatever changes we decide. And the other, the other thing that I want to clarify before we get started. We, in various discussions, we mentioned 24 units and 25. Vito mentioned 25. I think we need to be real clear about what that number is. And I'm thinking it's probably 25 because I would round up, but Jerry, what do you think?
I would normally round up, but I don't think I would round up here because honestly, I, I'm quite sure that every square inch of the 3.8 plus acres is not buildable. So in recognizing that, I don't see a reason to round up. Yeah, I, I, I hope that's not a deal breaker, 24 to 25 units. But I agree with you, we, we better be specific.
So you're going with 24. I'm going with 25. Brad?
24.
Okay, Mayor? Sorry about that. I got you mid-drink. Do you agree with 24, 25? 24, okay. So the number, I'm assuming that's, do we need to get Vito's approval on that or? Vito, would you weigh in on that?
Yes, I'd recommend that.
Yeah, I'm, I'm good with that. I was just going by the calfs and phone like what other products were, had been done. So it's the classic street, but yeah, I'm good with that.
Okay, thanks, Vito. So we've decided on 24 units as we go through the findings. Now, I'm assuming again that either Leila, you or Scott will pull up the findings, or I can pull them up. I have them.
I've got them right here, Leila, if you want me to share them.
Yeah, please, Scott, thanks. And I'll take notes while Sola Savani and staff will revise the findings.
So if the council determines that the requirements of MZO 3.0304A can be met with conditions, staff recommends the planning commission approve the application subject to the following conditions. We're going to change those conditions. So A, the approval shall be limited, limited to the layout submitted and approved as part of the application. Any modification involving altering the phase boundaries, a change in proposed usage, increasing the proposed building footprints by more than 10% or similar modifications shall require a new application and review and review to proceed. Does that, since we've agreed on 24 on the acreage, do we need to, is there a change in that finding?
This might be a good place, and I'll look to Savani to offer any thoughts here too, but this might be a good place to note the number of units.
Okay.
So perhaps the approval should have been limited to the layout submitted, limited to 24 units or something of that nature.
Savani, does that make sense?
Yes.
Okay. So I'm assuming, do we vote on each one of them or do we vote on the end?
I would suggest just we can go through each one and then
Vote on the whole thing?
Yeah.
Okay. And Jerry, please speak up if you, which I know you will, if you disagree with any of the additions or solutions that we come up with.
Sure.
Construction for individual buildings shall require a building permit, review application and approval. The applicant has the option of submitting a building permit, review application for each building, for a group of similar buildings, or for all of the buildings within a phase. Any changes? I mean, that seems pretty straightforward.
Yeah.
Okay, C. Engineering plans for the entire development will be submitted as part of the development of the process, assuming of phase one. The applicant shall have the option of installing public facility improvements for the entire project or only for each phase, unless otherwise, otherwise modified by the city, city public works. The minimum improved roadway width during the development shall be 22 feet. That seems pretty straightforward.
But it, it's straightforward, except I don't, lacking my experience on planning commission, I don't have a full appreciation for what the installation of public facility improvements could entail. So if I could just get schooled on that, I know you mentioned it in one other condition.
Okay, that makes sense.
I think I understand basically, but I'd love to know specifically what's anticipated here.
Leila, could you respond to that?
I could, but Scott might actually be a little bit more articulate, so I can pass the baton to Scott, and I'll think Dan's here today.
That makes sense. Scott?
Well, a little, little more difficult when I'm sharing my screen, I had to find the controls. So, so what that would be would be water sewer to the, and electric to the property.
So those would be considered public facility improvements?
Correct.
Okay.
And they've already got approval from, you know, a preliminary review from Public Works, wastewater for all of that. So before they can begin construction, that has to be approved.
Okay. Jerry, does that answer your question?
I guess it does. It, it surprises me a little bit. I mean, why, this is a so on, on my home where I have hookups to water, gas and water sewer and electric, those are considered public facility?
Yes.
Yes, they are. Yeah.
There's a lot I don't understand about.
We're learning a lot, Jerry, yes we could. Um, okay, D. Building permit review applications and associated engineering plans for phase one shall be submitted within two years of the date of final approval of this application. Was there a comment? Somebody have a comment? Associated submittals for the remaining phases shall be submitted within five years from the date of final approval of the building permit review of phase one. Modification to the phasing or time extension shall require the review and approval of the planning commission. That also seems pretty straightforward. E. All stormwater turnoffs shall be addressed on the subject property. Applications shall provide a stormwater runoff design plan for approval to the city during the building permit review phase of the project. Now, I, I have a, this a curiosity question. I know that there has been times that the owner of that property has felt that the city did not have adequate storm grain removal. I'm assuming that the Dorcas project took care of that issue?
It did, yes. So that remediated some of the issues that were related to the site and provided additional storm capacity along Dorcas. But the point of this is, and this was staff's recommendation, and also I think feedback from the planning commission, is that the stormwater is going to be treated on site. So it won't be won't be going into the Dorcas street system.
Okay. F. Applic, this is, I mean, this is the big one. Applicant shall reserve or dedicate 40% of the site for a private park. The applicant shall provide the city with the site plan that indicates the percentage, location, and specific use for the open space on site. The open space shall be so indicated on the plan deed restriction to that effect, shall be, shall be filed with the city. That's going to take, I would assume substantial change if we even keep it in.
Well, I'll look to Savani, but I think since you accepted the 6.5 dwelling unit per acre standard, this no longer applies.
I, I agree.
Well, we got it if Savani agrees.
Okay, I do agree.
Okay, so F is gone. G. Prior to issuance of building permits, the developer shall submit evidence from Tillamook County that the proposed hotel complies with county regulations regarding the establishment and operation of a hotel slash motel. That seems pretty straightforward.
Yeah, and I'll note too for members of the community, because this was a big topic of conversation throughout the discussion is this is one place where a hotel differs from a short term rental. Because there are certain standards that a hotel has to meet that are different from, as I understand it, from an STR. So we included this in there so that that was, to address those concerns.
Okay, and Leila, I'm surprised that it's regulated at the county level. Is there a state? Are there state regulations?
The county is responsible for managing health and safety for things like restaurants, hotels, motels, and that sort of thing. And I'm sure a lot of their rules come from state law, but that's my understanding.
Very good.
Okay. H. Can we go back? Did we do H? Scott? Operations of the hotel shall continually comply with all necessary health and safety provisions of all state, county, and local agencies. Okay. I think Leila just answered that. So next. I. Prior to issuance of building permits, the applicant shall submit evidence of the consolidation of the two parcels, Township 3 North, Range 10 West, Section 29D Tax Lot Number 2100, Township 3 North, Range 10 West, Section 29DA Tax Lot Number 2600 into a consolidated parcel. I'm assuming that remains. J. Prior to beginning construction, the applicant shall submit the current wetland analysis to the department, to the Department of State Lands DSL for review and approval. If the DSL requires changing to the layout, these revisions shall require review and approval by the planning commission. K. The site shall contain 53 vehicle parking spaces as identified on the site plan. Sufficient parking shall be required throughout the development commensurate with the requirements in ordinance 95-4, section 4.090. I'm assuming that would be changed with the reduction in housing units.
I believe so. And one way that you could address that is that the site shall contain, maybe Savani can help me with some wordage here, but sufficient parking consistent with, maybe Savani can help me with some wordage here, but sufficient parking consistent with, you know, as generally identified on the site plan, so that since there are a reduction in 10 units, you'll likely see a concurrent reduction in parking. So we can work on the verbiage of that.
I'm, are you okay with that, Jerry? I'm assuming that's...
Yes.
Um, L, applicant is required to clear vegetation west of the site driveway location to achieve at least 225 feet of intersection site distance measured from a point, 14.5 feet behind the edge of the travelway on Darkest Lane, consistent with intersection site distance requirement as a policy on geometric design of highways and streets. That would be AASHO manual. I think that's going to be really important. Okay, M, prior to occupancy of any structure, the developer shall complete the following. One, install and/or extend necessary public facility improvements consistent with the city and with the Halen Bay Wastewater approved engineering plans. Two, install parking improvements and landscaping consistent with approved building and engineering plans. N, unless otherwise specified or specifically modified by the decision, development of the site shall continually comply with the applicable provisions in Ordinance 95-4, including a building height setbacks, parking lot coverage and other applicable provisions. O, compliance with these conditions, the requirement of the Manzoni Zone Ordinance, the Halen Bay Wastewater Agency, the Halen Bay Fire and Rescue, Tillamook County Environmental Health Department of State Lands and applicable building codes provision shall be the sole responsibility of the developer. Is there any, based on the change, is there any additional finding that needs to be included? Is that, Scott, is that a yes or no?
Sorry about that, Linda. Could you repeat the question? There was a siren going by.
Okay, we've gone through the findings and made actually minimal changes. Is there, based on the change in the applicant's direction, at the applicant's direction, is there any finding that we would need to add to this that is not currently part of the findings?
No, I don't see anything we'd need to add as far as building goes.
Okay, okay. Leila, any other thoughts in terms of additions to the findings?
No, I think you have it covered.
Okay. So now I think it's, we need to vote on the findings. Are there, Jerry, do you have any questions prior to voting on the findings?
I don't.
Okay. So all in favor of accepting the findings as presented? All in, all in favor?
Aye.
Brad and Linda, so the three pass. So it's, I think that's all we have to do. Do I hear any comments from legal or from staff? Okay. So I'm pretty certain Jerry might want to say something, but I just want to iterate again the importance of the planning commission and the work that they did to get us to this point and the incredible number of hours, both in the meetings and outside of meetings to prepare. The contributions of the citizens and their comments, I hope, I hope the community can understand why we made the decisions we've made. We've tried to be as transparent as possible. And again, I just can't emphasize the importance of moving forward with the comprehensive plan. A lot of these issues, definitions and issues, hopefully will be taken care of in the new comprehensive plan and then the zoning ordinance built off of that new comprehensive plan. So again, I want to thank staff, the community and specifically the planning commission for all the work that they did. Jerry, do you want to say something?
Sure, I certainly agree with everyone you've thanked for the reasons you thank them. I do think it's very important for folks to hear loudly and clearly that the council was prepared to support the planning commission's decision on the 40% rule. In fact, we voted to do so, but then we were faced with a change of circumstances in which Vito is able to avoid the controversy and we're able to avoid further litigation by going with the 6.5 dwelling units per acre and reducing the total units from 34 to 24. So we did not reject the good hard work of the planning commission on the issues presented to them. On the traffic issue, we did not disagree with either the planning commission or the community that there were impacts. We, however, guided by Luba, we were instructed to find more substantial evidence than had been presented previously and we were unable to do that. So, you know, we have heard from a lot of folks that think the question before us is, do you support the planning commission or not? That was never the question before us. We had a independent obligation as the planning commission. I think both bodies did a more than adequate job in upholding their obligations under the law to the community. And I do think that we were clearly handicapped through nobody's individual fault, but through circumstances, we were handicapped by having only two members of council able to deliberate in this process. We, we could not have ended today with a 2-2 vote. It was not an option. The adverse consequences to the community were spelled out by the city attorney on Wednesday and repeated today and we were not going to end today on a 2-2 vote. I didn't know how this would come out. I didn't know Vito would make the suggestion he made in the middle of today's deliberations, but I believe that we have resolved the matter in a way that ends the expensive and time-consuming process and reduces substantially the size of the project. And I agree with Linda that the passion of the community on this matter needs to be channeled into the bigger work in front of us as we redo the comp plan.
Okay, so if there are no further comments, close this hearing and we'll move to the next challenge. So thanks, thanks, everybody.